Call the meeting to order, please. Today is March 27, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Here.
Mayor Potem Rouse.
Councilmember Hartz.
Here.
Councilmember Sinan.
Here.
And Mayor Maria.
Here. And we have a ceremonial item. Will you read that for us, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Item one, proclamation recognizing April 2018 as National Poetry Month.
Our poetry people are all ready. I'm going to read you the proclamation. April is National Poetry Month. Whereas the city of Santa Barbara is widely recognized as an arts nexus providing a spiritual home for a diverse and talented culture of writers, readers, and speakers who seek to reflect and expand upon our understanding and compassion for ourselves and each other. And whereas since 1996, the Academy of American Poets has designed April as National Poetry Month to highlight the extraordinary achievements and ongoing legacy of American poets and increase the visibility, presence, and accessibility of poetry in our community. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara, recognizing the value of poetry, established a poet laureate position in 2005 to honor local literary excellence and the spoken word by utilizing poetry to celebrate and elevate community events. And whereas current Santa Barbara poet laureate Enid Osborne, past poet's laureate, local educators in our public library system continue to steward appreciation of poetry and the written word in the community through events and programs throughout the month of April. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara recognizes the Office of Arts and Cultures stewardship of the Poetry Out Loud National Recitation Competition through a partnership with the California Arts Council, National Endowment for the Arts, and National Poetry Foundation, helping local high school students learn to master public speaking, build self-confidence, and explore their literary heritage. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kathy Mario, do hereby proclaim April as National Poetry Month in Santa Barbara. There it is. And Ms. Osborne is going to say a few words for us, and a poem, I think.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, council. We so appreciate support of poetry in Santa Barbara. We're very excited about this. I want to invite everyone to come, all of you, to come to our April poetry events. And in order to find out what those are, you can go to our online calendar at sbpoetry.net or check Facebook. Type in Santa Barbara poetry events on Facebook to find our notifications. Or you can see me and give me your email and I will send you a calendar. During the late 80s and early 90s, when I was just getting my feet wet, women poets had to compete to be heard. The poetry scene was still a man's world, even here in Santa Barbara. And we did compete. We had the likes of Valentina Nupp, Perry Longo, Cynthia Anderson, Maia Sojourner, Abigail Albrecht, Katie Ingram, Bettina Barrett, and others. Back then, the Beat aesthetic was alive and well here in Santa Barbara. So in honor of Lawrence Furlingetti's 99th birthday and this auspicious event, I will read an excerpt from my poem Homage that describes the SB poetry scene in the late 80s and early 90s. Homage. The prolific Abdal High, formerly known as Daniel, who wrote in his sleep, pulled countless poets to the mic and showed us how to make our own books, has taken his continuous song and gone to Philadelphia. We read whenever, wherever we can, our media, word of mouth, landline, handbill. Did you hear? We flock like pest birds to coffeehouse, small bookstore, garden, art forum, church, careful to sidestep little piles of censorship, but sometimes being asked to leave for bad language and other persistent myths such as acting crazy, shouting, standing on chairs. At the green dragon, all is embraced. Still, we have a well-behaved poet at the mic. Against a backdrop of golden light from three grand old church windows, she squeaks out exquisite verses that no one hears. The espresso machine chimes in and she sits down crestfallen. A friend's arm goes around her. Hey, you were great. Phil Taggart gives a verbal drumroll and Merlin moves the mic to one side, recites by rote a long punch to the face, a lone wolf's howl, hands in pockets, eyes defiant, one vein throbbing in his forehead. Then like nothing much just happened, he says, "Thanks for listening." And stumps to his chair, his left foot drags this from laying his chopper down on Camino Cielo. "I was road pizza," he says. "It was a poet who stopped to help me." His eyes haunted, his voice like breaking sticks. Don't we love a lost man? The earthling Andromeda booked in mostly Cafe Roma and the arts forum in the back of Comanice's at Cool Junk Store among the wigless mannequins, the male poets hold court. Matthias, Adam, Holden, Bradford, there is practically a no-girls-allowed sign, but of course, we crash with attitude and these ill-adjusted poet men, bitter, heartbroken, scared, drop their smirks. Edwin has just finished his epic Mary, the windy finger of God, and the four make eyes mumble to each other and nod. During break, Eddie throws up in the toilet as Holden rolls around selling his latest poetry zines, hand-folded at midnight. And the groupies, the newbies, all in black, black berets and eyeliner, half-Goth girls, smoke and dangle their legs off the loading dock. It takes four of these to support one reader who's going for cool, but too many coffees later, she gets up to the mic and she's just a mass of jitters. Then Val steps up in cowboy boots, the mannequins lean, the girls cry black tears. She cuts us to the heart, but her intros are funny. She's the one we look for. Val, come back, Valentina darling. Bradford takes an obtuse stance, looks off at something over our heads, a clear favorite. The men's club whistle and stomp their feet before Brad reads. Walt hosts the dragon this time. Jane tries on a new poem, no caffeine, still she shakes like a leaf, reads, "The small white lights fill me with despair." Walt doodles cartoons on a napkin like Fellini, goes up to Jane, smiling as they fold the chairs afterwards, says, "By way of welcome." "So, you want to be a poet, young lady?" Walt's eyebrows hop up and down like mice. It is years, years before she forgives him for that question. Having just delivered her masterpiece to date, he erases it in a word. But she does. Dear Walt, so gruff, so generous, she does forgive him and writes something better. Thank you.
Bravo, Madam poet laureate. Ms. Rubin, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would just love to invite members of council and the community to the Alhakama Theater in the Presidio State Park. It's a partnership between state parks and the city of Santa Barbara to celebrate National Poetry Month. And Enid will be stewarding it with students from the countywide Poetry Out Loud competition. So there'll be high school students reciting poems. And it's Saturday, April 14, at 1:00 p.m. at the Presidio. And we'd love to see everybody there. We'll have past poets laureate as well, and it will be a great tribute to Santa Barbara's poetry scene. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation. Thanks. Mr. City Administrator, any changes to the agenda? No. We'll go to public comment then. Pete Del Bello, you're up first. And Mr. Miranda is giving you his time, so you'll have four minutes.
Okay, I have something for everybody.
You'll be followed by Lauren Watson.
Actually, one for each of you, for you and Mr. Vincent and Mr. Casey. And of course, I'm very generous today.
Go ahead.
Very generous. Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Pete Del Bello, and I am a Santa Barbara native. Four things to discuss, and as always, I'll keep it within my time limit. First, I want to thank Sebastian Aldana Jr. from the Neighborhood Advisory Council for helping me get the graffiti removed from the East Side Library sign, and I really appreciate it. And I'm sure he watches the meetings on TV, so I want to thank him. And I'm sure I'll see him at the next NAC meeting in April. Naturally, I want to wish everybody here and watching a happy Easter and to let everybody, remind everybody, April 1st. And this is not an April Fools' joke, that sales tax is going to go up 1% on April 1st. So if you're going to buy something now this week is a good time to do it. That's the reason I bought this hat this week, because that's, you know, I saved enough to buy lunch at Melpus. And then also, to let you know, as I mentioned, I was going to keep people updated on the medical marijuana dispensary at 118 North Melpus Street, that it will be going before the Planning Commission. That hearing will take place on Thursday, April 5, at 1:00 p.m. here in council chambers. And that is, naturally, you can watch that as well on City TV. And Madam Mayor, I know that you'll be excited to hear about this, what I just presented, because I know we both love dogs. Actually, asking everyone to, I'm going to mention this wonderful dog named Orion, who I hope will be adopted soon. It was a young lady that brought this to my attention. Her name's not on here, so I don't know if she's kind of private, so I don't know if she wants her name mentioned, so I'll just say, if she's watching, Chau Bella. But invite everyone to meet, if they can come meet Orion. And a very nice-looking dog at George Pet Shop, which is the center courtyard at the Montecito Country Mart at 1026 Coast Village Road. That is Saturday, March 31, from 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. And let's see, well, I guess this is his publicist that wrote this, because I don't think he can talk. But I'll read what his publicist wrote. It says, "I am in therapy dog class and working on my canine good citizenship certificate. I don't mean to brag, but I am super sweet and smart. All the people I meet say I'm a good catch, so I hope I find my forever home soon. Could be yours." And if you come and meet Orion at George Pet Shop at 1026 Coast Village Road, there is actually 15% off George brand products. So those of you with dogs, that is nice. I'm actually going to be looking for something for my Aunt Elaine's dog Shelby, who I'm going to see the next day. And Shelby loves me. Well, my Aunt Elaine loves me too, but, you know, it's not the same thing. So for more information about Orion, you can call Shelley at, both numbers here are 805, at 569-9647, or, and that's 569-9647, or the Santa Maria Valley Humane Society at 349-3435. That's 349-3435. Thank you very much for your time and kind attention, and happy Easter to everyone. Thank you so much.
Lauren Watson, come on up. And Oscar Gutierrez is giving you his time, so you have four minutes.
Thank you, City Council, for giving me the opportunity to speak here with you this afternoon. About two months ago, I purchased a six-by-eight-foot canvas entitled "The Healing Wall" for our community that's been impacted by the recent Thomas Fire and Mudslides. I brought pictures, 10 pictures of it, if you would like to look at it. It's been signed by the sheriff, it's been taken to farmers' markets, to churches around in Montecito. And it's a really, really powerful piece of art that I feel really expresses healing and the community coming together by the recent devastation from the fire and mudslides. It really needs a home. It's been placed in my living room, and I live in a studio, and it's a pretty big piece. And I didn't know if there was anything that we could do where it could go in a place where the community could walk by it every day, or in an area where it could be shown to our community. It's called "The Healing Wall," and I really think it is a really big opportunity for everybody to come together and grieve in a way from the recent tragedy. That is all I really have to say.
Thanks. You can leave that photo.
Okay, great.
With the clerk, and she'll pass it to us.
I do have to describe the black and white pictures.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ellen K. Spear, are you here?
Yes.
You're next, and Anna Marie Gott will be our final speaker. You have two minutes, sir.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. I am Ellen K. Spear, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to express some thoughts. And I don't know anything about Beat, but what I have to say is more upbeat. I own and live in one of two cottages at 524 San Pasquale Street. And while the area over there, which is called the Lower West, does not have the appeal of San Roque or San Marcán at this time, the city has begun a plan of good stewardship, and I just am here to congratulate you for that. There's a couple of things that I'd like to thank you for. One is adding the bike lanes on both sides of Rancheria Street. It improved the neighborhood dramatically, and there's no impact from what I can tell, my property's around the corner from there, but there's no impact from what I can tell that's negative about the area. In fact, it's improved the quality of that area dramatically from a visual perspective. And secondly, a while back, the city did add bus stop seating and refuse cans, which were really necessary for that location. And it's made bus traveling a more favorable experience, and I've used the bus from time to time. But where I live, I'm a half a mile from the ocean and a half a mile from downtown, so it's pretty easy to walk one way or the other. At any rate, the Lower West Side may need a new name someday. I'm thinking Rancheria, as the Spaniards saw it as they came through. Lower denotes something lower, not upper. And we'd like the city to consider that at some time or another, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks. Ms. Gott?
City Council, there was an article in today's Santa Barbara news press, as well as an article earlier this week in the LA Times. It talked about SB 827. I don't know if you know this, but SB 827 could substantially affect Santa Barbara. There are at least two bus routes, Bus Route 1 that goes through the West Side and Bus Route 2 that goes through the East Side, both of which are scheduled at every 15 minutes. That actually ends up equalling the definition of what SB 827 is, as defining high-quality transit. This means that those corridors could actually experience an increase in the number of stories to five to eight stories. What will happen if San Andreas, all of the units along San Andreas, or portions of them, people decide that they want to actually increase their, you know, their wealth by going ahead and taking advantage of SB 827 and bulldozing those lower-income apartments? What happens if we lose five or six or 800 apartments so that we can get five- and eight-story market-rate units with some inclusionary? But we're going to end up destroying a substantial amount of units if this is passed and we have an empty bus schedule that has buses in these areas every 15 minutes? I am pro-affordable housing. We need housing, but we need the right kind of housing. And I would like you to, one, find out if we've written a letter about this. If we haven't, go ahead and put this on our legislative agenda for...
Your time is up, Ms. Gott.
...to actually get this addressed.
Thanks. A question, Mr. Dominguez.
Not for the Speaker per se, but for the City Administrator. I've been reading several articles about this legislation, and it is of concern. I think it's really directed towards bigger cities and not small cities, particularly wedged between the mountainside and the coast. And I am curious what we have in our legislative agenda that might cover that. I know we do talk about local control, and is there enough in there where we can take action, or should we schedule something later on? I know it hasn't gone to its first hearing in Sacramento, but I'm curious what we could do if this body wanted to take action.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, we've already been looking at this as staff. We've been aware of this pending legislation since January. It is very aggressive when it comes to talking about loss of local control. I'll confirm with my office about whether we've already sent out a letter or not. I think it is consistent to oppose it with our current legislative platform. If we haven't sent out a letter already, I'm sure we're planning on doing so. This is very high priority for the League of Cities to oppose this legislation as well, and it goes against a lot of the tenants in our legislative platform.
Not only is the League of Cities opposed to it, but the Sierra Club and NRDC are very concerned, so thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Casey. Okay, so that concludes public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar, and there are some items to read. Thank you.
Item two, adoption of an ordinance for lease agreement with JBC Investment Holdings One LLC for the lease agreement of Mother Stern's Candy Company. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the waterfront director to execute a lease agreement with JBC Investment Holdings One LLC located at 219B Stern's Wharf commencing upon the effective date of the enabling ordinance. Item three, adoption of ordinance establishing initial rates on cannabis businesses. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara establishing reduced tax rates for different categories of medical and non-medical marijuana businesses pursuant to Santa Barbara Municipal Code Section 5.42.250. Item four, resolution for acceptance of a right-of-way dedication at 630 and 634 Anacapa Street. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara accepting a dedication for right-of-way purposes on the properties known as 630 and 634 Anacapa Street. And item five, annual authorization for the allocation of the city's Share of Transportation Development Act funds for bicycle and pedestrian projects. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the filing of a claim with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments for allocation of $75,712 in Transportation Development Act funds for fiscal year 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Rouse would like to pull number three. Anybody else? Mr. Rouse, go ahead. We read three.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be wanting to vote separately on this to remain consistent with my voting record on this object.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for item three, please? Very good. All in favor? I? And one abstention?
No.
Oh, no.
Nay.
Two noes. I saw Eric Friedman made the motion. The second, you seconded it. You made the, okay.
Motion by Hart, seconded by Friedman. Noes Dominguez and Rouse. That's it? Very good. Thank you.
Very good. And if there's no further objection, we'll waive further reading of the rest of the consent items. Do I have a motion for the rest of the consent calendar? From Mr. Rouse? By Mr. Dominguez. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? No, we're good. So that was unanimous. Next item, please.
Next item, item 14, contract for construction of new playgrounds and patio at the municipal tennis courts.
Thanks. Ms. Zachary, ready?
Yes.
Very good.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I have a short presentation for you today and some recommendations regarding moving forward with construction of these improvements at the municipal tennis courts. First, I thought it would provide a great opportunity to talk about the history of the facility. It is just under 7.8 acres, was purchased in 1909. It's actually originally part of the old Salt Pond property, which now comprises the Andre Clark Bird Refuge. And the facility improvements that we have on site today were developed essentially over a 50-year period. Just as a way of really looking back in history, this slide provides an illustration that was included in a report in 1924. The bird refuge itself had not been constructed, but as you can see, there's the concept for that. The railroad did exist, had already bisected the property. The area that now comprises the municipal tennis court facility is this area up here in the corner. The highway hadn't been constructed, so what we call Old Coast Highway was in fact Coast Highway back then. Gives you a sense, when you actually look at a map today, it looks pretty much like the same configuration, just the land use has changed over time. The clubhouse itself, which is located just on the south side of the stadium, the stadium, and four courts were first constructed in 1937 as a WPA project for $95,000. In 1941, additional five courts were established, including the first four lit courts essentially in Santa Barbara. It was a very popular place for tournaments. It was the center for the Southern California Tournament Competition. The first tournament was actually held in May 1937, the first youth tournament, the following year in 1938. In 1952, this gives you a sense of how the land around the municipal tennis courts changed. Golf course to the north, the housing that began developing sort of to the north and the east. The highway is fully in place, the bird refuge is there, and the final three courts were then subsequently added in the 1960s. As the municipal tennis facility, it was also the place where UCSB, Santa Barbara City College, Westmont, and Santa Barbara High School students played tennis before they had their own courts. So as you can see, over years, the role that it's played in the community. This aerial sort of Google map shows the facility in 2016. Eleven courts and a partial stadium. You can see the stadium here. In the 1970s, it was closed for a period of time because it was falling apart. In 1980, half of it was actually demolished, and some improvements were made on the southern half of the stadium court. The lighting that we currently have, which are really only courts three through, two through four, was installed in 1990s. Since that time, the use of the courts has evolved over time as more courts have been constructed in Santa Barbara, and the role of tennis in the community has also changed. The neighborhood itself has also changed. And we find more and more a desire for the neighborhood to interact with this facility for more uses than tennis. So that leads us to the idea of moving forward with some improvements on the site to speak to some of the neighborhood needs. So as I said, we have 12 courts today, including the stadium. The stadium itself has been declared not usable. There was a structural report completed in 2014, so the use of the stadium is essentially limited to private lessons. The other courts are used for group lessons, youth and adult lessons, private rentals, I mean, private lessons, tournaments. We have a cosponsorship agreement with the Santa Barbara Tennis Club. In 2016, we converted one court to pickleball, and 2017, another court. So now we actually have eight pickleball courts, because you can put four pickleball courts in one tennis court. That's proving to be an increasingly popular court sport, particularly for longtime tennis players that don't want to run as much as they used to, or perhaps fear the potential injuries associated with the sport of tennis. Pickleball is also extremely social. We started with four players, I think in 2014 or '15. We now have about 200, and so it is a very social game. The first conversion, the city paid for, and the second conversion, largely the pickleball players paid for. So it's also a great example of how we've worked with the community to make a facility improvement. Going back to showing what the tennis court looked like in 2016, the last real effort to spend any resources in... to spend any resources on this facility was in the 1980s. And so we've been facing sort of patching things up. We do resurface the courts. We have replaced the wind screens. We did put in new lights in the late 90s. But over time, we've realized that there are a lot of things that we could do. The stadium is falling apart. I mentioned earlier that the neighborhood is increasingly wanting to use it for other things. We have children that play in the parking lot in the summertime. This area right here is moderately landscaped. And then also, access has been a key consideration for quite some time. So, moving forward, back in 2011, we started scoping improvements, and really was looking at not just the things that we're proposing today, but from a long-term capital investment need, needing to look far out into the future. What should we potentially think about using this facility for? There's lots of sports that occur on courts that aren't just tennis, and this could be an ideal location to develop those at some point in the future. Until we get to that point, however, there's an opportunity to improve the access and safety of the site, and then also make it more usable for young families. So the improvements that we've actually moved forward with since 2011, working with the Public Works Department, there's now a new sidewalk on the north side of Old Coast Highway, and a crosswalk, which are largely funded through a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. Those improvements were completed in 2016. We also completed a new path from the corner of Old Coast Highway and Park Place to the tennis area, the parking lot, so that anyone who's a pedestrian could access the site more safely. There isn't a sidewalk that runs along Park Place right now, adjacent to the park property. And then we made some safety and access improvements around the restrooms, removed some block walls that had been installed back in the 70s, and improved the lighting and also the pathways. And that work was done with some general fund resources, working with the Public Works Department. We began working on the playground area and the patio area, and this aerial gives you a sense of where they're proposed to be located. Here, in a portion of the parking lot, a flat area that we determined could be repurposed for a playground, we are doing some improvements to the actual parking lot. So there's only one net loss parking spot of the whole parking lot. It is a rather large parking lot, and it's only during certain tournaments that does it get really full. And then the tennis patio area over here is something that a lot of our tennis patrons have been asking for for years, and it will provide an opportunity to support tournaments, youth camps, a place for people to hang out in between games or before their lessons start, just a place to rest, which we currently don't have that. The development of this project, as I mentioned earlier, began in 2011, and we sort of started doing some conceptual drawings. We then spent time in 2015 in June, having community and stakeholder meetings on site, both with the neighborhood folks, but also tennis patrons. And then also had a subsequent meeting on site with the Parks and Recreation Commission in September 2015, and through those meetings defined the approach and the improvements that we could take, including the access improvements and the crosswalk. That's when that became really important. The Neighborhood Advisory Council reviewed and recommended moving forward with the project in 2015. And then we spent the bulk of 2016 going through design review and Parks and Recreation Commission findings, getting our coastal development permit from the Planning Commission. Ultimately, we went back to the Neighborhood Advisory Council in 2016 to get their review and approval of submitting a Community Development Block Grant to support construction of the playground. So this is an illustration of what the playground will look like. Some of the improvements include obviously a safety fencing, a pathway to get into the playground. And this way, the new pathway also is over here that we've already, excuse me, is over here that we've already constructed, so there'll be a connection here. New trees, landscaping, that's one of the objectives that we have, is also to enhance the landscaping. The playground itself will serve ages, young children, you can see the smaller swings, and then also ages seven through 12. We put the project out to bid and received four bids for the project. The low bid from Civic Construction has been deemed acceptable, and that's the recommendation that we have for council today. Looking at the project costs, our total costs are estimated to be close to $380,000 for this element of the project, including the work effort for design to get to where we are today, construction, and then the change order, some additional construction costs that we have associated with the project, permits, soil testing, that kind of thing, purchase of the playground, actually, the equipment itself. We currently have $388,000 for the project. This includes $190,000 in general fund in our capital fund account for this year. We received $145,000 from the Community Development Block Grant process last year. And then the Wood Claysons Foundation granted $53,000, actually back in 2015, when we were thinking we'd get this project done more quickly, to go towards the playground itself. So the project is fully funded, and we'll be able to move forward with your approval of the contract. With that, the recommendation is to increase the revenues and appropriations for the Wood Claysons Foundation grant, and then to award the contract to Civic Construction in their low bid of $253,700. Thank you.
Are there questions for Ms. Zachary? Mr. Rouse, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Zachary, as I recall, was there not a bioswell or drainage issue in that property somewhere, in that area?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, it, the area is subject to potential flooding if we aren't able to, if we don't put in sandbags and make sure that the drainage course that we currently have on site is flowing. It flows to the bird refuge, and so we manage it. We manage it. We have a permit to manage it, because it does end up getting vegetation in it. We clean it out before every winter. We also manage the vegetation and the outfall at the bird refuge, and recently worked with the railroad to remove some of the vegetation under their bridge to allow the water to flow through. But yes, it is within a flood zone, and it's been like that since it was constructed.
So that'll be part of the consideration for the construction contract and all that as well?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, yes, the way it's designed and the slope and the way it's designed takes that into account.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
Thank you for this project. Anytime that we're enhancing outdoor recreation for youth, I think it's a positive for our entire community. My question actually is in regards to the stadium. You got me curious, since it's no longer usable. What's the long-term plans for the stadium?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, we have in our capital program the concept of rebuilding it with the idea that whatever was rebuilt around the court could potentially support a multi-sport court. So it could be, it would be used for more than just tennis. It's actually quite a large space. Some of the ideas that we've talked about at the staff level, and clearly until we move forward with any concept planning, is how to construct a structure around the stadium that has some use besides seating. So could you put rooms or storage areas underneath? How could you purpose it more into a recreation-type facility? We haven't done any work to move that forward, and would do so at some point in the future when there's capital funds to do that.
We don't have any speaker slips. I'd like to thank Councilmember Bendy White, right? He really pushed for this, and if he's out there in TV land, thank you. And thank you to Wood Claysons Foundation and everyone who's helping us bring fun recreational opportunities for children in Santa Barbara. Is there a motion, please? Very good. Councilmember Sneddon, and seconded by, that was you, Mr. Rouse. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? No. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Ms. Zachary. Keep us updated. Stage three drought update is the next item. And we'll just wait whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. My name's Kelly Dyer. I will be, I'm the Water Supply Manager, and I'll be giving the drought update today. That's the wrong presentation. Here we go. And I'm actually really pleased to be giving you this presentation today. We've been giving these monthly since 2014, and over the years have had to deliver some not-so-very-good news and some really challenging issues related to our water supplies. Today, I have some really great news for you, so I'm excited to be able to be in that situation. Going through our regular outline, drought status, demand status, water supply strategy, and our water supply status, and then I will save the good news for the end. Our rainfall totals for the water year starting September 1st, that's the county's water year, we've had about 11 inches at Gibraltar, about nine inches at Kachuma, and about nine inches in downtown Santa Barbara, all well below normal still. We're still in a pretty dry year despite some of the recent rains that we've had. This is the statewide chart. It's actually developed by federal agencies, and you can see generally, pretty much the whole state is seeing dry conditions this year. And our area here is in kind of the worst part of it. Our neighbors in Ventura County have been deemed in extreme drought, and ours is in severe. Of course, we all know that locally, our condition has remained extremely severe throughout, and we've been in a stage three drought emergency, and that will continue. These are the precipitation projections for the next three months, so below normal precipitation forecasted. And this is our demand, community conservation. We had 30% reduction for the month of February. This is our, the blue is our targeted water demand, and the red is the actual water demand. So you can see, it is tracking as planned for the month of February, and we have a 38% conservation running average. Something about this chart, we developed these numbers based on our production, our water supply meters, and that's consistent with what the state likes to see for their reporting, because it is gross water use before any system losses that occur before it gets to the customer. We are replacing many of our production meters. We have several projects going on right now. Those projects should be complete by the end of April, and we don't know if it will affect these numbers. We won't have any information on that for at least a couple of months, but just wanted to give you a heads-up that we have those projects going on right now. This is our water sales by month, and the purpose for showing this chart is really just to be tracking whether we see any shortfalls in revenue. So for the month of February, our revenues came in right on target. We did see slightly higher revenues for previous months. In December and January, we were seeing a little more tier-two and tier-three water use than we would have expected for that time of year, but overall, no shortfalls in revenue. Our water supply strategy, you've seen this chart before, it has not been updated to reflect the recent storms. And so we will be bringing this back to you in May with an updated outlook. In these projections, we assumed no additional Gibraltar supply would be available, and also no additional Kachuma supply. I'm optimistic that with the recent rains that we've had, that it will buy us one more year and fill this gap, but we need to do a full assessment of all of our water supplies and come back to you in May to have a full discussion on that. So Gibraltar storage, it is at 98% of capacity after this recent storm. It's about six inches away from spilling. It's very close. And so inflows for this year, we had about 500 acre-feet on January 9th, and then for the month of March, we've had 2,900 acre-feet of inflow to Gibraltar. So that was great news. I think overall, this most recent storm was a good rain for multiple reasons. And we have not been taking water from Gibraltar. We shut down our diversions ahead of the January 9th storm due to water quality issues. When it rains, we get a lot of ash and sediment that comes into the reservoir, which affects our ability to treat it. We have other sources that are better water quality and easier to treat. So eventually, what we've seen in the past is that settles out over time, and then we can start diversions again. In this last rain, just some of the, our dam caretaker was taking some pictures, and his observation was that it was a normal type of runoff that we would see. It wasn't any sort of mud flow, so that, so we're hopeful that it is usable. Kachuma is at 77,000 acre-feet of storage. It's a much larger reservoir than Gibraltar. The recent storm brought the storage up from 39% up to 40%. So not, there were about 2,900 acre-feet of inflows to Kachuma, but because the size of the reservoir, that's really not, doesn't make much of a difference in our water supply outlook. And to date, most, if not all, of the inflows have probably gone to the downstream water rates. Just the way the water accounting works, we need really wetted conditions with tributaries flowing in order for it to be project water, because the intent of the project water was to capture water that otherwise would have gone to the ocean. So we really need really wet watershed in order for us to receive any water supply. The city's current allocation is about 40%, and we have about 7,100 acre-feet of water currently in storage. And at this time, really not much change in the lake storage, so we expect that COME will have to consider reinstalling the emergency pumping facility this summer. Really, it's the pilings that would potentially be installed first, and the reason they have to do that is because you need a certain amount of water to be able to install them. If it gets too low, you have really muddy conditions, and it's very difficult to install pilings in mud. And then the barge doesn't need to be operational pumping water until the following summer in 2019. This is a chart of the Kachuma storage. The green line is the previous drought, and the black line is the current drought. And so here we are with our Kachuma storage, still waiting to see if we will get a little bump up in storage, but we're kind of running out of time at this point. So the lake levels are similar to what they were when we declared stage-two and stage-three drought condition in 2014, a few years ago. Imported water, we continue to maximize deliveries as much as possible to Kachuma. We have about 1,400 acre-feet in storage at Kachuma, as well as 1,100 acre-feet in San Luis Reservoir. We're hearing from CCWA that that water is secure. It's not at risk of spilling at this point. And we also have 100 acre-feet of water at Palmdale Groundwater Bank. This is something the city participated in, I believe it was in 2011, quite a long time ago, when San Luis was spilling. We moved some of our water into a groundwater storage bank. And Palmdale has called CCWA and said they could return some of the water this year, and we have said we'd be interested in taking it back. It's only about 100 acre-feet, but it is something. So that will be coming to us as well. The DWR allocation is currently 20%. You may recall, there was some discussion about reducing that down to 10% in our last drought update. With the recent storms, we've heard that DWR has said that they can support a 15% allocation, although there have been some additional storms that moved in again after they did that analysis. So it may go up to 20%, maybe a little higher. We won't know the final allocation till May 1st. If we can at least sustain the 20%, I would hope, I would hope that we can at least sustain the 20%. I don't know that it's going to go much higher. Supplemental purchases, we have been working with CCWA on pursuing an additional 1,500 acre-feet of water, which would allow us to maintain maximum deliveries to Kachuma through 2019. And then, and those, we've been looking at various options. It's ranged from purchases from areas north of the delta, as well as... It's ranged from purchases from areas north of the Delta, as well as exchanges with state water contractors south of the Delta. And at this point, it's looking like we're going to pursue an exchange. Those are more reliable. Some of the issues with the north of Delta purchases are that there's a small window when the water can be delivered. It's between June and September when the water's delivered. And with the dry conditions, there is some concern that some of the allocations in Northern California might be reduced, in which case these water purchase opportunities would go away. And we really won't know until June if that's going to be the case. So exchanges, south of the Delta, much more reliable. The water's there, and we don't have issues with transporting it. So that is something that we're pursuing. Our water debt is currently 3,300 acre feet, and we have roughly 10 years to pay that Groundwater basins are currently at 30% of capacity. Our foothill basin, the groundwater levels are still pretty low. We haven't seen much recovery. That recovery is expected to take about five to 10 years, based on observation from the previous drought. Our storage unit one groundwater levels, which is our downtown basin, have actually recovered. That's a consolidated basin, so it's under pressure. And when we start pumping, the water levels are very responsive. And they're actually in artesian conditions in some cases right now. So that is good. However, seawater intrusion is the main issue that we have in the downtown basin, and we don't want to risk bringing in seawater intrusion any further than we need to. The wells are being exercised regularly, although we have not had to bring them back online at this point. And the desalination project, the plant is in full operation. It's becoming more and more routine, other operations at the plant. We've seen some really exceptional water quality. In particular, the TTHMs, which are a byproduct that's formed when the organic matter in the water is combined with chlorine. We normally would see something around 30 parts per billion of TTHMs, and it's down to one. So it's really incredible. It's really good water quality, and we're looking into ways where we might be able to blend that water with other sources in our system and kind of spread the water quality And we are working with IDE to finalize a plan for public tours. Don't have a date yet, but we are working with them on that. And now for the good news. We were awarded $10 million grant from the state for the desalination project, and this was a major effort. I have a lot of people to thank, including Malcolm Hamilton, who's our staff, who really was dedicated in preparing a document that was over 1,000 pages for the grant application. Joshua Hagmark, who really saw this through from beginning to end as well. And a special thank you to Senator Jackson. I really don't think this would have been possible without her support. She was involved from beginning to end in helping craft the guidelines so that we would be eligible to compete, and also, in the end, really convincing DWR how our project really is perfect for the Prop 1 funding. And so really, a big thank you to Senator Jackson. And we will have a press release coming out regarding the grant award that will follow the city council meeting today. And that's it for today.
Are there questions from Ms. Dyer? Mr. Hart?
Yeah, thank you very much for the excellent report. That was great news about the state grant. One question about the water debt. The strategy of repayment of that is to wait until there's wet years where the price of water goes down, and then use that lower-priced water to repay the debt. Is that the way that you approach that issue?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, yes, that's the way I've been approaching it. When San Luis is at risk of spill, that's a great time to ask agencies, can you take some of this water and repay some of our debt? Last year, you may recall, we purchased water from Santa Maria, City of Santa Maria, at a really reasonable rate. It was, they, it was a little bit wetter last year, and so there was water available, and it was less expensive. So we paid down about 2,000 acre feet of our water debt. So yes, we'll be looking for, in the wetter years, opportunities to be able to pay that down.
And can you tell me more about the strategy for using the desalinated water more citywide to improve water quality? What technically do you need to do to get that water distributed to a broader section of the city?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we would need to build a pipeline from the desal plant up to somewhere near Cater, whether it's the Cater Clearwell or a new blending reservoir near Cater, to be able to distribute it throughout the city.
Okay, so there's nothing new that, in that regard, that's still the same pipeline that we've been talking about, the approximately $10 million construction and engineering costs to do that?
That's correct.
And does the receipt of the state grant funding, I mean, is coincidentally a similar number, is that potentially raising the viability of doing that pipeline to a more urgent situation? Or is that still waiting to see what the needs are long-term for expansion of the desal plant and potentially even regional use of the facility in other ways?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, I think the issues you mentioned will need to be considered in terms of the regional use and the long-term use. And I believe Mr. Hagmark will be returning to city council in the near future to discuss the financial situation of the water fund and how that grant may be used for all of the capital needs that we're facing.
Well, thank you very much for that information.
Councilmember Dominguez.
I had a question about the Gibraltar reservoir, the 2,900 acre feet of inflow. How much of that would be usable by the city?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the 2,900 into Kachuma?
Gibraltar.
To Gibraltar. So the city owns all of that water. The issue that we have with it is water quality, which can limit how much we take sometimes. So we're hopeful that, that we have a similar trend from what we've had in the past, which is that it, after it stops raining, that it settles out within three or four weeks, and then we can start diverting. We had quite a bit of success this last year. We were able to divert all the way up until just before that storm event in January. So most of the months last year, we were able to take full diversions. So hopefully, most of it, at least 2,000.
And what does that mean, full diversion? Can you explain that process?
Sure, there's, we have a water right that's pre-1914 water right to Gibraltar water. And we have some agreements in place in terms of the maximum amount we would take per month. So we would divert up to our maximum monthly limit under our water rights.
And what's, what's the limit?
The total for the year is about 4,500 acre feet.
Okay, so we could conceivably take this much out if it settles properly?
Correct.
And then you mentioned that Kachuma also received about 2,900 acre feet. So is it the same because the basin size is different, or they receive different amounts of rainfall?
No, I'm not really sure about that. I will say, it was unusual to get runoff this early in the year, even to Gibraltar. Normally, we would need at least 10 inches of rain before we start to see runoff. But I think because of the condition of the watershed with the fires, we saw more runoff than we typically would. I don't know the answer on why Kachuma and Gibraltar received about the same amount of inflows. Once Gibraltar is full, then I think we'll see more going into Kachuma. It'll just enhance the inflow. Once Gibraltar's spilling, then all of it will go to Kachuma. So it just didn't quite make it to that point. It's at 98% full, but did not spill.
And the slide says Gibraltar, 48% of normal. That was, how much do you receive, the 11 inches, in this previous storm, or the entire water year?
The entire water year.
Okay, do you know about how much it received in this storm?
In the recent storm, I think it was on the order of about four inches, four to five inches.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Councilmember Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Dyer, in our last update, I think Mr. Hagmark was talking about the ongoing conversations we're having with the federal agencies regarding the biological releases. What's the status of those, of that, is there any update on that, and how much water we can expect to dedicate to that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, we haven't received a draft biological opinion that's in a public draft at this point. I know the Bureau of Reclamation and the National Marine Fisheries Service are working on that, and so we can expect it to be coming. There is a potential that it could significantly affect our water supplies, but that hasn't, we'll have to wait till the public draft comes out to be able to comment on it.
And who acts as our regional advocate for that, for this area?
That would be the Kachuma Conservation and Release Board. That would be tracking those issues and supporting the Bureau along the way. The consultation itself is between the two federal agencies, but Reclamation will request information to be able to support those negotiations.
Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez, did you have another question? Oh, okay. Well, very good. So, Mr. Hart?
I actually did have one more sort of follow-up question to the quality of the desalinated water. That level of purity is, makes it unnecessary for people to have water softeners where they're getting that kind of water. Is there any effort to communicate that to customers about, you know, maybe reconsidering the use of their water softeners in those geographic areas that are getting desal water?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, our water conservation program actually has been communicating quite a bit with people about checking their water softeners, and we have some information available on that. So they can call our water conservation hotline, which is, the phone number is on this slide, 564-5460. But we, we have been letting people know, we have information on the extent of where the desalination water might flow within our distribution system, so they know if they're potentially getting it. But I also remind people that our, our supplies are very dynamic, and so they can change quickly. They're not always going to be getting desal water. There might be other sources that we're using, even on a day-to-day basis, and month-to-month and year-to-year. So, so they would have to continue to make adjustments.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Thanks. So we're still encouraging our residents to conserve, so indoor and outdoor. Is it too simplistic to say because we had some rain, they don't need to water the outdoors so much?
That's true. I think we advise at least for, I think it's 36 hours or 48 hours after a rain not to water at all. So certainly, this gave us some reprieve in having to irrigate our outdoor plants.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Dyer? Anything else from the council? Okay, we thank you for your report.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's 3:05, and we're going to recess. We have a great item at 6 o'clock. It's where the city gives out grants to nonprofits. So come back, and you'll hear wonderful stories of what these nonprofits are doing. But we could do our council liaison assignments right now, if anyone attended a meeting or had some other adventures. Councilmember Sneddon?
I can go.
You want me to go first?
I can go.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So a few things to report this week. Went to MTD meeting this morning. They've just done a comprehensive survey on their ridership, people who ride or people who don't ride, people in the community, over 900 respondents. What they found out was we are a multimodal community. Many people ride the bus more than three times a week, but also drive and also bike. And they're starting to really look at the AUD and the ADUs, the impact that those will have to their scheduling and their operations if that comes to pass, that those densities increase along those corridors. So that's a big concern coming up. I attended, well, several of us attended the World Business Event with panelists Hal Conklin, Anhel Martinez, Downtown Santa Barbara Association, panel speakers. There was one idea that came up there that we need a sort of business development position, maybe throughout the city, something that was brought up repeatedly, and still frustration about permitting. I met with neighbors on the Riviera, a large group who's come for public comment also, and a lot of frustration about ministerial approval of ADUs. So just something to bring up. Attended with Mayor Mario, Home for Good meeting, really strong collaborative with coordinated entry, and I think that could really make a big difference. Also attended March for Our Lives, student organized event, city college students and city college professors also facilitating that. It was a very successful event. I need to report out from COME. We already had a great update there that Gibraltar is up 14 feet and close to spilling, Kachuma's up. We still will be looking at mobilizing the emergency pumping in the summer. But reporting out from closed session, I'm just going to read this into the record. "The board approved the initiation of litigation for a member agency's failure to pay quarterly assessments. The board further directed the general manager and COME legal counsel to hold the filing of the lawsuit pending any additional productive discussions with the other party at issue, assuming an extension of the existing tolling agreement is signed by both parties before the current expiration date of March 30th. And after such time, the general manager has notified designated directors that such discussions have ended, and the matter is to be filed. Once any litigation is initiated, the pertinent and required information regarding that litigation will be publicly disclosed." That's what I can report out, but I'm also in communication with Dan Henchke, our, one of our city attorneys, and has been very helpful in this process also. And one more report, after the storm or during the storm, had a nice tour of the EOC, and it's very impressively, impressive how well-run it is, and I feel in very good hands in our city. It's nice to see that up and running and how it works. So, thank you. Paul Casey.
Thanks. Councilmember Rouse?
Yeah, to follow up on the EOC, I attended the 7:30 AM briefing given by Chief Waldron, and Mr. Casey and all the department heads were there, and very well-coordinated, and felt like there was no stone unturned in terms of getting the city ready to go in case the anticipated happened, which fortunately, it kind of dodges a little bit. So, but it was a good team effort.
Thank you. I attended the, what you called Home for Good. It's the Mesa Homeless Group, and there's a philanthropist, Chuck Blitz, who hosts us, I think it's once a month. But the presentation was about Home for Good, and the first official meeting of that group is tomorrow morning. I'll be driving up to Bulton. It was what formerly used to be the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness, C3H, so I'll make a report when I come back from that. On a more fun note, I went to the Menudo Festival, which is a fundraiser for the PAL program, and put on by our police department, I think the Police Officers Union, music and food and dancing in Veracruz Park. So it was a great location for it. Maybe someone else went, and I missed you. I kind of came late. The Sister Cities Patras Group had a celebration of Greek Independence Day this weekend. Yes, I was at another party, and that was down at the Santa Barbara Winery. Very nice, and I look forward to being more involved with our Sister Cities programs. We cut the ribbon on Recipes is the breakfast cinnamon rolls place, famous for their cinnamon rolls on Santa Barbara Street, six-year anniversary with the chamber. You missed out. Councilmember Dominguez was there. We had a good time. And I was also at the World Business Academy event, looking at retail issues. Anyone else? Otherwise, we'll recess and be back at 6:00 PM. Mr. Vincent, thanks for being here. We didn't ask you one question. Thank you. We're in recess. here. We didn't ask you one question. Thank you. We're in recess. People are still filling out slips. That's fine. You turn them in to Mr. Casey over here. Anybody seated and hasn't filled out a speaker slip and you want to speak, please give us one of your slips. We want to hear from you. It's a great event. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Friedman?
Here.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rouse?
Here.
Councilmember Hart?
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Here.
And Mayor Maria?
Here. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, we don't see anybody out there. Very good. And so we'll go to our item. Are we starting with Ms. Stotts? I'm sorry, the clerk will read the item. Thanks.
Item 16, Community Development and Human Services Committee Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2019 and Annual Action Plan Public Hearing.
Ms. Stotts?
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, actually, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Liz Stotts. I will be discussing the Community Development and Human Services Committee Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2019. With me today is Doty Orchowski. She is the current committee chair, and she'll be giving a few comments after my presentation. This evening, I will give a brief overview of the city's grant program and the recommendation process undertaken to make the recommendations. I provided each of you with a funding recommendation report. It contains a detailed description of the allocation process, as well as a summary of all the programs recommended for funding today. This report is also available on the city's website. The funds being recommended for allocation originate from two sources, city human services funds and federal community development block grant funds. Human services funds, shown in red, are general funds that council committed in October to support programs that provide direct human services to low-income city residents. The funds shown in blue, in the shades of blue, actually, are CDBG funds. The amounts shown in dark blue are the entitlement amount that we expect from HUD to commit to the city. The smaller amount in lighter blue is program income repayments. And that little sliver that you see right there is money that was left over from last year. So combined, there's about $1.6 million to allocate. Here's a brief history of how the available funds have changed in recent years. As you can see, human services funds have remained stable in the last few years. For this current grant allocation process, council has committed $726,150,000, which was level funding from last year. With CDBG, you can see that funds have also remained somewhat level in the last few years with a slight upward bend. At this point, we still don't know how much exactly we're getting for fiscal year 19. So for planning purposes, we estimated level funding from last year, which was approximately $853,000. Each year, council establishes the funding priorities for the human services and CDBG program. In October, council approved the priority shown here. Priority one are programs that meet basic human needs, and programs that reduce the community impact of homelessness and reduce the impact of gang violence by providing services directly to gang-involved youth. Priority two are programs that are preventative in nature and promote the highest degree of functioning the individual is capable of achieving. The priorities for CDBG fall under the three categories. Homeless Assistance, those are programs that provide services to homeless individuals and families and victims of domestic violence. Public Facilities Infrastructure, these are capital projects that improve the facilities of organizations that serve low and moderate income residents, as well as public infrastructure and park improvements in low and moderate income neighborhoods. And Economic Development, these are supportive programs that provide self-employment training and small business loans. The funding recommendations before you today were made by the Community Development and Human Services Committee. By design, this committee is made up of a diverse group of individuals that represent the various facets of our community. This year, we have five openings in the committee, and they are shown here in red. Those marked with an asterisk are new categories that council approved in October. We are currently recruiting for all of these positions, and we ask that you please help spread the word. The deadline to apply is May 1. As you will learn today, the committee members spent a considerable amount of time and energy evaluating the many applications submitted to make the recommendations before you today. They understand how important these funds are to the applicant organizations, and their recommendations are never made without due consideration. They should be recognized for the professionalism and commitment. The funding process began in October with public noticing. An advertisement was placed in the Santa Barbara news press, and an announcement was sent by mail and email to all agencies that had previously applied or had expressed an interest in applying. This included current grant recipients and agencies that have applied for funding in the last two years. The notice was also posted on the city website. Staff held a mandatory application workshop for all applicants, during which an in-depth training on Zoom Grants, the city's requirements, and measurable outcomes was given. Staff was available by phone, by email, and in person to answer applicants' questions. And as an incentive to submit early, staff offered to review and provide feedback on applications that were submitted before the deadline. Applications were submitted on Zoom Grants. Because of the Thomas Fire, we extended the deadline by one day to December 19. Fifty-nine applications were submitted during the, at that time, and during the review process, three applicants withdrew their requests. The remaining 56 requests totaled more than $2 million, which exceeded the available funding by more than $575,000. The committee members analyzed each application package, which included a 35-question application form, proposed outcome measures, client demographics, as well as program and agency budgets. Staff also reviewed the applicant's financial audits in order to notify the committee of potential concerns, such as excessive debt or operating deficits. The committee members spent four nights interviewing all the applicants. They also had additional meeting to deliberate on their requests before finalizing the recommendations. The committee members also conducted site visits and reviewed the performance reports of all the applicants that had previously received city funding. Using Zoom Grants, committee members scored the applications based on their written proposals and verbal presentations, and Doty will go over the scoring criteria in more detail after I'm done. The committee members then had the option to approve or decline funding or abstain if they had a conflict of interest. They were then required to individually suggest a funding amount if they elected to approve funding. The applicant's average scores and funding recommendations were determined using an Olympic method whereby Zoom Grants added the individual committee member's scores and dollar amounts, but then deleted both the highest and the lowest scores and amounts before dividing the result by the remaining number of members who entered a score and amount. This average score and funding amount served as a starting point for a CDHSC subcommittee, made up of three committee members, which then finalized the recommended funding amounts for each application, and considered other important factors, such as their score, the priority, the number of committee members that voted in support of funding. The final recommendations were approved by majority vote of the committee on February 27. In the Public Services category, 50 applications were submitted with requests totaling just over 1.3 million. The available funding for this category is $854,249, which is a combination of city human services funds and CDBG public services funds. Federal regulations limit the use of CDBG funds for public services at 15% of the city's allocation. As you can see, the majority of public human services funding comes from city funds. The committee was able to recommend funding for 43 of the applications submitted. Under the Capital Projects category, the amount of CDBG funds available this year is $599,982. This amount includes the unused CDBG funds from last year. The city received six applications with requests totaling just nearly $680,000. The committee is recommending funds for all six capital projects. Three are facility improvement projects for nonprofit organizations, two are city neighborhood improvement task force projects, and one is an economic development program. The remaining CDBG funds will be allocated to fair housing and administration of this program. As I stated earlier, HUD has not made available the city's CDBG allocation for fiscal year 18. As a result, the committee formulated a contingency plan towards recommendations in case the actual allocations are higher or lower than we expect. Should CDBG funds be higher than expected, the recommended plan in the Public Human Services category is to equally distribute the excess available funds among the applicants that are priority one, and that scored 80 points or more, and were not already at full funding. For the capital category, the excess available funds will be equally distributed among all the applicants that did not already receive full funding, and if there's any remaining excess funds, they will be awarded to the Ortega Park playground. If CDBG funds are decreased from last year, funds from bottom-scoring capital projects and bottom-scoring priority-two public service programs will be decreased or eliminated until the deficit is depleted. At this point, the program has been, CDBG program has been proposed for elimination in the president's budget. If enacted, this will take effect during next fiscal year. We just found out late last week that nationally, for fiscal year 19, CDBG funds have been approved, increased by 10%. So that's good news. We still don't know how much that means exactly for us, but it's up overall. So that's good news. In order for the city to receive federal funds such as CDBG, HUD mandates that an annual action plan be submitted. This document identifies the specific activities that will be funded with CDBG funds. The action plan covers the period of July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, and will incorporate the fiscal year 2019 funding recommendations before you today. HUD requires that at least two public hearings be held during the development of the action plan. The first was held before the committee on September 26, and today is the second public hearing. Comments received during today's hearing will be incorporated into the action plan. The draft version of the action plan is available right now for the required 45-day period. Actually, the 45-day period starts tomorrow. The report will be found on the city's website, and it's on the homepage, actually. Hard copies are available on the city clerk's office, at the main library, and at community development, and comments must be received by May 7. We tentatively plan to bring back the final action plan to council for final adoption on May 8. However, because we still don't know how much our CDBG allocation is, it is likely that we will have to publicize a revised action plan draft, which implements the city's contingency plan once we do know the actual allocation. And then, we've been notified by HUD that they will allow us to extend the action plan at a later deadline. So, May 8, tentatively, possibly later. So, before I conclude, I'd like to go over quickly the recommendations before you today. We ask council to approve the committee's recommendations as presented on Attachment 1 of your agenda report and in the funding recommendation report. We ask you to approve the committee's contingency plan, authorize the community development director to negotiate and execute agreements implementing the funding recommendations, and to conduct the public hearing for the action plan. And this concludes my presentation, and I pass it on to Doty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council, I'm just going to give you a very brief overview of the process that we employ in trying to meet the city's objectives to meter out the funding. We want to do this to make sure that all of your objectives are met and that the most efficient use of funds is obtained. So we do it by conducting site visits, by reviewing progress reports, by looking at detailed written applications, and then we interview each applicant. We incorporate everything that we've learned, and then we look at specifics in the applications, such as the agency, where we review the applicant's track records and past performance. We look at their board, and we want to see the composition that each 501(c)(3) has in their board. A higher score on this would indicate that the board is diverse, and the representatives are true targets of the application. The program, we want to see if the score in that section, we want to make sure that the applicant's ability to provide bicultural and bilingual staff is up and running. We want to make sure that the program fits the applicant's mission, and we want to see how the program is monitored. We also look at measurable outcomes. The success of a program, we feel, relies on focusing on quality outcomes and using metrics that truly matter. So it's our goal that when we look at the measurements of the positive results, then we would know what the client should expect if, when they experience services from the apartment that's funded. And we look at need. We really try to ferret out if any duplication of services. We want to know what makes each and every applicant stand out from another one. We look at the composition and diversity of the clients and the target, and we also review the funding to make sure that the amount that they are requesting correlates to the number of clients that they are proposing to be served. We study the applicant's finances. We look at their revenues and expenses, and we want to make sure that there's not an overreliance on city funding. And one of the questions that we always ask is, if you didn't get funding for some reason, would your program continue to go forward? In addition to the above, we look at capital proposals. We look at project descriptions, the project need, the project cost. So when you're reviewing these, the maximum score is 100, plus one extra point if an applicant meets the city minimum wage requirement. So the recommendations before you today have been well-vetted. The committee members take their jobs seriously because they recognize that the funds assist in providing an invaluable safety net for the people of our community. For the capital projects this year, the disparity between the requests and the available funds was not terribly large. So we were happy to be able to fund or partially fund every single applicant. We didn't have that ability to do that with the block grants, because we estimate that we'll have just over $854,000 in funds to distribute. But the grants, the applications before us totaled 1.3 million. And that is truly the hardest part of being on this committee, is that there are applicants that do highly, highly commendable work, but there's simply not enough money to go around. So I hope that you will be proud of the work that's being done with the assistance of the city funds in your community, and we ask for your continued support of our recommendations. And thank you for this opportunity.
Do we have questions from the city council for Ms. Stotts? Madam Chair of the, what is your name again, please?
Doty Orchowski.
Orchowski. Do we have questions for Ms. Orchowski or Ms. Stotts? We'll go to public comment, then. Kathleen Reel, you're up first with Independent Living Resource Center, and I hear you're retiring. I'm going to enjoy you while we have you.
After 36 years, I think they've had enough of me.
Go ahead, please.
Well, Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Kathleen Reel, and for the past many years, I've had the pleasure of being the program manager, managing the services of the Independent Living Resource Center, otherwise known as ILRC, located at the West Side Neighborhood Center. For those of you not familiar with us, the ILRC promotes independent living and full access for individuals with all disabilities through advocacy, direct services, education, and action in our communities. Among the many services we provide that are crucial to the disability community are assistance in locating affordable, accessible housing, and also housing, loss of housing prevention, working with the housing authority and landlords and the consumer to mitigate issues that have come up. Benefits, counseling, and budget management, sign language interpreters, which you've seen a lot of in the news lately during the recent disaster that's coordinated through the ILRC, assistive technology and adaptive devices, which we were also able to loan some of to the emergency shelters that the Red Cross put up for individuals who needed them at the time. Bilingual information and referral services on all issues related to disability, and advocacy on access issues, just to name a few. None of this would be possible without the support of our funders and local support. I want to thank the staff and the task force for the incredibly difficult job that you all do so well. And on behalf of all of us from ILRC, we wish to thank you for this recommendation for funding.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Idalia Gomez from Rape Crisis Center, you're next, followed by Bruce Willenberg, Rental Housing Mediation, and Patricia Keeling, Community Action Commission.
Good evening. My name is Idalia Gomez, and I'm Program Director at Santa Barbara Rape Crisis Center, SBRCC. On behalf of SBRCC, I would like to thank the City of Santa Barbara Community Development Human Services Committee for the time and effort that they spent reviewing grant applications and formulating recommendations for the city council. We would also like to thank the City of Santa Barbara staff for the support they provide grant applicants every year. We're grateful for the recommendation of funding for sexual assault counseling, support services, and community education. With program funding, individuals will receive individual counseling via the 24-hour hotline or in-person, medical and legal advocacy, medical and legal accompaniment, and information and community referrals. Also, members of the community will engage in rape prevention education to increase awareness and understanding of sexual violence, which assists participants with developing behaviors that increase the attitudes which support the prevention of sexual assault. Santa Barbara Rape Crisis Centers empowers people through healing and social change to eliminate all forms of sexual violence. We are committed to transforming lives by providing services and education that meet the needs of our diverse community. City Council, thank you for the support you have provided Santa Barbara Rape Crisis Center over the last several years. Please continue to extend your support and assist us in our mission. Lastly, we will be hosting our annual fundraising, fundraiser Chocolate Divine on Saturday, April 28th, and we will be sharing some exciting news. At Chocolate Divine, we'll be unveiling our brand that's changing. It's a new name, new logo, and new colors. The existing brand has served us well, but as we look to the future of our work in the community and that of ending sexual assault, it's time to update the image of the organization. Be assured that although the look has changed, our services will remain the same. We will continue to work diligently to support survivors of sexual assault and their loved ones through their healing process in the aftermath of sexual assault. We will be unwavering in our efforts to eliminate, eliminate sexual violence in our community and rely on your support for our programs. We will hope that you will join us to debut and celebrate our new brand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Willenberg, Vice Chair of the Rental Housing Mediation Program. Uh, I have served on the program as a mediator for a total of 12 years, which means that with Silvio not here anymore, I'm sort of the senior mediator.
Okay.
The Rental Housing Mediation Program has been assisting landlords and tenants in our community to resolve their disputes out of court for the past 42 years. The program is composed of two full-time staff and 15 city council-appointed volunteer mediators who are trained in mediation by program staff. Our local hero Andrea Buffano is the Senior Rental Housing Mediation Specialist, and Joel Estrada is the bilingual rental housing mediation specialist. The program objectives are to provide neutral and accurate information to help resolve landlord-tenant disputes out of court through staff consultation and occasionally mediation services. Staff and mediators are neutral, and we listen to everyone on every side and try to maintain a kind of objective neutrality. On behalf of the Rental Housing Mediation Program, we thank you for your continued support and the approval of the recommended human services funding. It will assist us in the continuance of our good work. And last, please note that April is Fair Housing Month.
I like it. Thank you, sir. Patricia Keeling, followed by Gary Lind and Marcia Bailey. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Patricia Keeling. I'm the Executive Director for the Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara County. As host organization for the 211 Helpline Program, the Community Action Commission would like to thank the Community Development and Human Services Committee for its recommendation for continued support of this critical service. 211 is a comprehensive information and referral system, quickly and effectively connecting Santa Barbara residents with health and human services, disaster relief, and public information. On average, 31% of all 211 callers are City of Santa Barbara residents. The typical caller is Caucasian, female, and nearly 45% are over age 55 and low income. They are most often seeking information on mental health or addiction services, housing, legal consumer services, excuse me, and public safety services. Never was 211 services so important than during the recent Thomas fires and mud debris flow events. Our staff and call center worked around the clock to provide the most up-to-date information on evacuation zones, helping callers to interpret, uh, interactive evacuation maps, as well as directing them to local shelters and emergency relief. When needed, we connected callers to other organizations and resources in the community remaining on the line to ensure, and to ensure a warm handoff to another live person who could help them. We were the resource residents could turn to rather than clogging 911 emergent, or emergency management phone lines. In fact, we handled over 4,600 calls and over 7,000 text messages related to the recent disasters in that six-week period. A Thomas fire tab on our 211 website provided another access point for internet-savvy residents to access information. Whether dealing with a disaster or the needs of our callers on a daily basis, 211 is there every day regardless of income level, providing them with information they need to deal with life's ups and downs. The City of Santa Barbara CDBG funding is critical, as the 211 program does not receive the funding necessary to cover all of its operational expenses. In fact, CAC is currently utilizing over $25,000 of its own agency resources to ensure 211 services continue. For that reason, we ask the city council to approve the Community Development and Human Services Committee's recommendation to fund the 211 program. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Mr. Lind, Marcia Bailey will follow Janet Tico after you.
Madam Mayor, Council Members, my name is Gary Lind. I'm the Nutrition Services Director for Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara County. I'm here on behalf of CAC to support the committee's recommendation to grant CDBG funds this year to our agency. For over 50 years, CAC has supported Santa Barbara County communities with serving, this is including our Senior Lunch Program. Because of this program, we have helped many seniors meet nutritional needs on a daily basis. In Santa Barbara County last year, we served over 14,000 seniors with over 379 of those in the City of Santa Barbara. We did this to our home deliveries and congregant locations at Presidio Springs, Franklin Community Center, and Louise Lowry Davis Center. With this service provided, we know 100% of our participants got at least one-third of their nutritional needs met. CAC's goal is to help seniors live independently for as long as possible. Um, it is a known fact that good nutrition leads to prevention of illness and injury. Our delivery drivers for our home-delivered meals, participants often are the only contact the seniors see that day. It's also a good time for them to check on their well-being. Our congregant sites allow for socialization. Many of the centers have activities and events that seniors can participate in. With the senior population growing two times faster than the general population, we have to continue to find ways to support their nutritional needs. Many of these seniors have worked hard all of their lives, but the retirement benefits are not enough to provide for their needs in a changing economy. Because of our agency's large budget is often perceived that we don't need the funds. This is far from the truth, especially with our Healthy Senior Lunch Program. The program is partially funded by the area agency on, um, aging, and CAC needs to raise 50% of the funds, which this year is going to be $750,000. Our program is the only donation-based program. We ask for a $3 donation. Our average participant donation is less than 80 cents. Costs of our program continues to rise. Grants, fundraising events, private donations all play a role, but CDBG funds is an important component of this funding. CAC has worked with the City of Santa Barbara for years, providing services to meals for seniors. We understand we have a difficult decision, you have a difficult decision to make with limited funds. Grant funds awarded to CAC will go a long way in supporting the CAC partnership with the City of Santa Barbara, providing good nutrition to the seniors of Santa Barbara community. Lastly, on behalf of CAC and the seniors of Santa Barbara, we thank the committee for the recommendations, the hard work, and thank the council for the supporting our grant request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A question from Mr. Dominguez. Come on back, Mr. Lind.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify one of the statistics. You said something doubled. Was it the number of seniors who need?
The senior population is growing two times faster than the general population.
And is that true in the City of Santa Barbara?
Um, I got some, I, I have something I can give to you. We'll show you that.
Okay.
That's us, getting older, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
I have the worry that our seniors are losing their ability to stay housed as, as rental prices go up.
I have a fact sheet. I'll give you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey, come on up. Janet Tico after you, and then Nancy Tilly.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Marcia Bailey. I'm the CEO and founder of Women's Economic Ventures. Firstly, I want to say thank you for your support for many years, and two, of course, the staff and the, um, the committee for all of the time and work that, that you put in on the process. I wanted to take an opportunity just to give you a brief update on what's happening with fire recovery for Weave. As you all know, our small businesses were profoundly impacted by the Thomas fire and the mud flow afterwards. Thanks to some private funding that we've gotten, we've been able to, um, hire three new staff members, two of whom, one of, one came on last week, um, who's a communications person. Next week, we have a new business recovery specialist starting who will really kind of work in a triage kind of position to work with business owners one-on-one to really help them, um, identify what are the best services and, um, financial resources available to them. The communications specialist will definitely work on a bi-local campaign that we intend to plan and, um, work with other organizations, business organizations in the city, um, to really roll out over a, a long period of time. It's not like a one-off kind of thing. It's really something that, that we need to educate the public about, um, supporting local businesses. We have received about 59 inquiries about, um, our, our quick-response loans. We've funded about $150,000 in loans so far and anticipate that we will probably fund about $400,000 by June, and we will continue that special, it's a low-interest, $10,000 microloan. So, um, I will keep you up to date on those programs as we go along, and thank you again for your support.
My goodness, thank you. Thanks. Ms. Tico?
Hello. I'm Janet Tico. I'm here on behalf of AHA, Attitude Harmony Achievement. I'm a grant writer and facilitator with AHA. AHA is a youth program in social-emotional learning, and we inspire communities to feel safe, seen, celebrated, and emotionally connected. We equip youth with the tools to cultivate healthy relationships, manage their stress and emotions in the wake of conflict, to restore and repair with relationships, um, and to initiate connecting conversations across lines. Um, and our work, we believe, is important at any time, but particularly in the wake of everything that our community has gone through, um, equipping youth with the tools to be able to support one another when they feel emotionally flooded, um, and then also in wake of what's happening nationally. Some updates, some numbers for you. Last year, we served about 2,200 youth through our programs in all four area high schools and three junior highs. The junior high programs were an expansion this year that was made possible by the Women's Fund. Uh, and we also have an after-school program which serves primarily at-risk youth by donation, everything from Sing It Out to Ally Group to Guys and Girls Relationship Wisdom Groups, um, and that's about 125 youth. We also have a by-donation EMDR clinic, and since the Thomas fire and mudslide, um, AHA, several therapists on our staff have donated six sessions to anyone affected, um, and that's part of a two-year overarching effort to create a by-donation EMDR clinic. We're seven therapists and three interns, all of whom have received at least 1,000 hours of clinical supervision and 50 hours of specific trauma counseling training, um, can serve up to 100 families per year. A couple of events we have coming up are our Rising Together Event at City College, which is in partnership with the Community Environmental Council, where about 1,000 people are going to create an image of a bird rising from ash and mud, which will be photographed from above, and the youth are actually organizing and implementing that. And lastly, I just want to share that after the Valentine's Day shooting, more than 200 universities, national education and mental health groups, school districts, and 2,300 experts signed on to support a call to action to prevent gun violence in America. Their message was, "Don't harden schools, make them softer by improving social and emotional health." Um, and since our program was created in 1999 in response to Columbine, uh, we've been a leader in implementing this strategy, and we're proud of the way that we see it impacting our community. So, thank you.
Oh, my goodness, thank you. Thanks. Ms. Tilly? Daniela Garcia after that, and Victoria Libra. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Mario and City Council, thank you for being here. My name is Nancy Tilly, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer and the Chief Financial Officer for the Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinics. I want to thank the Human Services Committee. This is a difficult task. There's never enough resources to go around and much need, and they've done a great job of making recommendations. We also want to thank the staff. They've done a tremendous job, including Elizabeth Stotts, who we talk with regularly, and she does a fine job for you, and she should be recognized for that. Our organization provides high-quality, comprehensive, affordable healthcare to all people in an environment that fosters respect, compassion, and dignity. We're the largest safety net provider in the South Santa Barbara County. We support the request of the recommendation for the council to approve this program. It is for homeless dental services. Homeless individuals face much oral health neglect. Poor dental health results in poor nutrition, but also leads to diseases like heart disease and diabetes. We want to also tell you that this program will provide life-changing, um, things to the people who are beneficiaries of the program. This will provide benefits to 350 people, and if you have poor oral health, you can't eat properly, and you can't get a job, or try to improve your life, and so this does make a big difference. Thank you very much, and we hope that you'll support our program.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As Mayor Mario said, my name is Danielle Garcia. I'm the Business Administrator for Cliff Drive Care Center. Cliff Drive Care Center began when Avis Nellenberger saw a rising need in Santa Barbara, when working parents needed a loving place to have their children cared for during the workday, and she founded Cliff Drive Day Nursery in 1963. This was a year before the federal Head Start Program began and 10 years before California's Community Care Licensing Program. At that time, the program cared for children, children from birth until their entry into elementary school, eventually expanding to include before and after-school care for elementary school students and an after-school drop-in center for teenagers. As the program grew, Cliff Drive Day Nursery changed its name to Cliff Drive Care Center, and it limited its enrollment to children between the ages of two and 12 years, mainly due to space concerns. Following the transition of our counseling center from an onsite center to a referral network in offices throughout the city in 2016, the building previously used by our counseling center became available for an expansion of our early childhood education program to include infants younger than 24 months. We at Cliff Drive Care Center are excited about the possibility of expanding our program to include infants. We get several calls every week from parents who are inquiring about enrolling their infants into our, into our program, and at this point in time, we have to turn them away. Existing space for infants in childcare facilities in Santa Barbara is far below the current demand. Many parents have to return to work shortly after the infants are born in order to provide for their families, and this grant recommendation, for which we are extremely grateful, will allow us to complete the outdoor space that is required to complete the transition of this building into an infant care center. We are grateful for the opportunity to continue to serve the families of Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Libra? Or, and tell me how you say your name. Gary Abrams after you. Luciana Mitskin. Go ahead.
You did a great job with my last name. That was a really good first go. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Victoria Liever, and I am the Office Manager at New Beginnings Counseling Center, and I am here on behalf of our Executive Director, all of our staff, our volunteers, and our Board of Directors to sincerely thank you for your continuous support of our Community Counseling Center and our Safe Parking Programs. In addition, we would really like to thank Elizabeth Stotts and Deirdre Randolph and the committee for their work in evaluating all these various proposals. This funding is crucial in continuing to serve the most vulnerable members of our community, including those who are struggling with their mental health or facing housing instability. and overnight shelter for families and individuals who live in their vehicles, as well as providing low-cost counseling services through our Community Counseling Center. As a result, we can continue to assist in creating a safe place and sense of belonging for these members of our community. On behalf of New Beginnings, thank you all again for your incredible support, and have a lovely evening.
Thank you. Mr. Abrams.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council, Gary Abrams. I'm a volunteer member of the Board of Directors of the Jewish Federation of Santa Barbara, and I'm the Chair of the Facilities Committee. On behalf of my colleagues here today, our current Board President Laney Millar Melnick, our past Presidents Ron Zonin, Lauren Katz, and our Development Director Ruby Vargerson, I want to thank you for the opportunity to listen to our position in support of the funds that the committee has allocated to us for security and safety upgrades to our building. Just a quick word about what we do for Santa Barbara, for those of you who may not be familiar. In a nutshell, we provide a wide array of services and programs to the entire community. Just to name a few, we serve over 2,500 free meals per year to needy residents and seniors. We offer low-cost or no-cost licensed family and individual counseling services. We offer teen leadership programs, and we offer Holocaust education programs to over 800 students per year from all over the county. Our programs are open to anyone, regardless of religious affiliation. We're often referred to as one-third Jewish and two-thirds community. So why are we here? As you're all undoubtedly aware, antisemitic incidents have spiked markedly in the past year in particular. The ADL says that incidents are up 57% in 2017, and hate crimes against Jews are up 10% just in the last year. So we had the Santa Barbara PD and Homeland Security come to our building, do an inspection, and they made some recommendations. They said, "We need to harden our doors. We have wooden doors to the exterior. They want them to be steel, and steel doors, steel jams. They want us to install magnetic lockout devices in our lobby, and they want us to provide secured first responder access to the rear of the property in case of an emergency." In addition to security upgrades, we need to enhance safety for our seniors and handicap patrons. We have, in our main area, some very large, heavy sliding doors that lead to our community rooms. These doors are very difficult for the seniors and those with disabilities to operate. They also roll over a track that's elevated, impossible, near impossible for people with walkers and wheelchairs to traverse. Part of this proposal will allow us to provide easy-to-slide, handicap-compliant doors and low-profile thresholds, so they can be easily traversed. As a nonprofit, of course, we are 100% donor-funded. We work with a skeleton paid staff and rely heavily on volunteers like myself and dozens of others to make our programs viable. And now, with our recent local disasters, many of our main contributors are impacted themselves, are not able to help us, and that's why we need help from the committee. More than ever, we need help to provide these critical safety and security upgrades to our facility. Thank you in advance for your support of the committee's grant approval, and thank you for helping us help Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Luciana Mitskin with the Friendship Center, and then Mike Maybell, Patrick Lyra Lanier, and Anthony Caraccio will be our last speaker. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm here on behalf of Friendship Center, Day Center for Seniors, and I would like to, first of all, thank the staff and committee for the wonderful job they do. Your efforts do not go unrecognized, and thank you for the recommendation. We realize that these monies are discretionary, and we appreciate the fact that you all know the importance of these funds to so many in our community and to our nonprofit organizations. The Friendship Center provides day services for the most vulnerable people in our community of seniors, most of them affected with dementia and other debilitating diseases. We pretty much are what separates many of our members, our senior members who attend our programs, from permanent institutionalization. So most of them leaving their homes or in small group homes, and without the ability to come to a day center where they find the safety, the companionship, the activities, and the care that we provide, without those services, they would be leaving in a nursing home. And the overall lifespan of a person with dementia in a nursing home, as opposed to four years in a dementia care, in a nursing home is four months. So these are vitally needed services. Thank you so much for the recommendation. Thank you so much for your consideration, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Thanks. Mr. Maybell, did you want to come up?
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to add to what Ms. Garcia already said.
Okay, very good. Thank you for being here. So, Mr. Lanier, your turn, and then Anthony Caraccio.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council and committee members. My name is Patrick Lyra Lanier, and I oversee the LGBTQ+ program at Pacific Pride Foundation. This program includes our counseling center, which this grant benefits. Over our 42 years, counseling at Pacific Pride has been a much leaned-on resource by many in our communities. Our bilingual and monolingual Spanish-speaking individuals, who are lesbiana, homosexual, bisexual, transgender, queer, e interrogatorio, and their families, as well as those living with HIV/AIDS, will now have a higher level of clinical support because of this grant. I thank you for all of this on behalf of our Executive Director Colette Shabram, and our Board of Directors, and our small but hearty staff. This support allows us to welcome many on the margins of our community, and we couldn't be more ready to get to work, so thank you. And lastly, we just wanted to share that we'll be having our fifth annual Youth Connect Conference in Proud Prom on Saturday, April 14, from 1:00 to 10:00 p.m., held at Deckers Outdoor Corporation in Galida. We'll be basically providing this for free for any youth 12 to 17 years of age, up and down the coast, inland, Southern California, and it'll basically be introducing things like the Community Resiliency Model, which is a trauma-based, very user-friendly way of managing trauma and developing resources in the face of that. Following the natural disasters, we feel this is important, so please join us in creating that safe space. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, final speaker. And Mr. Caraccio, you're with the Organic Soup Kitchen.
Yes, I am.
Yay.
So, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, committee members. Wow, you guys, huh? So, my name's Anthony Caraccio, and I'm the Executive Director of the Organic Soup Kitchen. And although we have a lot of different programs, we work with veterans, we work with the Women's Free Health Clinic, we work with seniors, et cetera. Our main program is nutritional therapy for cancer patients. A few years back, one of the oncology nurses from Cottage Hospital realized that the soups we made were all very organic, very clean. They're great. They're good for you. They're vegan, organic, gluten-free, low sodium, pH balance, low acid. I mean, I can go on forever. Plus, when we finished the soups, we put them in a 24-ounce container that's hermetically sealed, and so they asked us, they says, "Chee, could you... We have a cancer patient that's low-income. Could you bring them some soup? Because they can't swallow, because a lot of patients have what they call dysphagia." And I said, "Well, we don't do that. It's out of our... We don't do that." Well, that was a couple of years ago with that one patient. Now, today, we have 14 drivers delivering to over 252 patients, low-income, at their homes, and it's growing. And good news, bad news, it's growing, it's unfortunate. I personally oversee all of the applications that come in, and it brings tears to your eyes. That's all I can say. So with the city helping us out with this, it's just supporting us for expansion and growth and more service to the community. Another thing I just wanted to say is that, you know, we get referrals from the Santa Barbara Cottage Hospital, Ridley Cancer Center, Hospice of Santa Barbara, visiting nurses, Teddy Bear Foundation, Santa Barbara Housing Authority, Adult Protection Services, Sansom Clinic, People Self-Outposing, and Doctors Without Walls. And when those calls come in, we don't say no, and thank God for this contribution. We'll be able to keep our services up. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr., do you have anything else to add, Ms. Stotts?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Rouse, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, I'd like to commend staff for their tremendous direction of a very hard-working committee that does some of the most incredible work of any of our committees that we have, that we appoint throughout the year or so. Clearly, great work, tough work, not always easy making these decisions, I understand that, but you guys put out tremendous effort. We couldn't appreciate you more. And with that, I'd like to recommend the passage of the staff recommendation. Here's a motion.
Excuse me. That was a motion by Rouse and a second by Mr. Hart. Go ahead, Mr. Hart, since you made the second.
Yeah, I just want to echo Councilmember Rouse's thanks to our staff and to the committee. Ms. Archowski, you really led an amazing process. There's a tremendous amount of work from the applicants and the committee to vet these applications and really come up with some difficult decisions, but the most important thing I want to say tonight is that this is one of my favorite evenings of the year. Hearing the incredible work that all of you are doing on a daily basis to help everyone in our community at every level of need is just inspirational, and we're very proud as a city organization and as a council to be able to financially help. We wish we had more money, but we're very proud of the money that we do contribute and the leveraging that you all do, soliciting private donations to expand that impact of those funds immeasurably throughout the community. And it really is a testimony to our residents and your commitment to your work and our partnership with the City of Santa Barbara, that all of this tremendous work is going on on a daily basis. So thank you for being here. Thank you for continuing to do your jobs, and we'll be partners as long as we financially can.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez.
I also just want to echo the gratitude. The committee and the staff put in so many hours, and having gone through the process myself as a former applicant, and going through actually a grant application process now out of the area for my nonprofit, it takes so much work, and it's appreciated by the applicant when the committee is putting in such close, detailed work, examining, asking questions, paying attention through the long meetings. So just tremendous thanks to you all for doing the work, and then, of course, for all the applicants for doing this hard work in this environment, not knowing whether the money was going to come. I remember we met at Ortega Park, was it a year ago, when Trump was first saying he was going to cut CDBG funding? So we had a rally, and cities around the country had rallies, so it's just exciting that we're actually able to do this. We all thought this would be in jeopardy. So thank you all for the hard work and having faith in the system and being part of the system to make things better. The cohorts you serve are so appreciative of the work you do, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Well, I'm going to also want to thank our staff and the committee for the commitment that you put into it in reviewing each application. You did a great job, and it's a tough choice when you have limited resources and you want to fund more than you have. I also want to thank all the applicants that came in today as well. I could probably personally attest, either through some involvement in some way, to each and every one of you over the years, but I just want to say, it really shows the generosity and the commitment that our community has for everyone in the room tonight and all your organizations and the others that we're funding as well. I mean, if you look at the stories we heard tonight, from infancy and children to our seniors, to addressing the issue of hate speech, to our most vulnerable populations, that government alone can't solve these problems, and to have you out there providing the direct services, you're both preventative and you're addressing issues that have come up, and you're strengthening our community and our families that are here, and it's just an honor to be a part of this with you and be a part of this. So I really appreciate all that you're doing. And I do have one question for Mr. Cologne, actually. It just came up today, is being that I am the appointee to the Community Action Commission on their Board of Directors, the City Council appointee, do I have to recuse myself from that vote?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, not unless you're compensated.
Okay, very good. Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you. I just, I mean, I don't think we can have enough gratitude for how much you've done and the careful consideration, and I think you said it best when you said, "Providing us a list we could be proud of," and I think we're all very proud of this list. It's not just varied and diverse, but it has, there are a lot of visionaries in this list, too, and furthering our goals in our community. And I just have to say that it had such a catchy cover that last night, my kids, so I have a nine-year-old, 14, and 18-year-old, and they're like, "What are you reading?" And we actually read every one of these out loud as a family. I'm going to cry because, you know, the program purposes and the target populations, you have touched every corner, every soft spot in our entire community, so thank you. This was my first go-around with this, and this is definitely my favorite meeting. This is... Thank you.
That's true. I was going to say, to the new people, this is the hearing that we all look forward to. We had good news from the federal government, didn't we? And I'm still vibrating from that and really happy tonight. It's been a tough year. Even the holidays were supposed to be a time for us to lay down our burdens and rejuvenate and look to the new year, and, boy, that was tough. So here, what, March? We're getting a little break, we're getting to celebrate, and I guarantee you, I think about homelessness every day, I think about our vulnerable youth every day, gun violence, I have to think about it every day, and I'll be able to sleep better tonight, knowing that you're working, you're working on it, right? Thank you for being out there, helping us make Santa Barbara a better city. So the recommendation is to approve the funding recommendations, to approve the funding contingency plan, and to authorize our Community Development Director to execute these grant agreements, and we've just held our public hearing. So if there's no other discussion, I think this might be a unanimous vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. That's unanimous. Folks, thank you so much for being here. We have no other business. We'll adjourn the meeting.